All right, we'll call our work session to order. Brother Zach, would you lead us in prayer for? Amen. Okay. Um, got the agenda here in front of us. Um, so, uh, the first item is a Region One EMS Board Appointment. What this is, you know, we're part of Region One and they have a EMS Board, State Board, and, uh, Mitch Golden is one of the representatives, uh, the last Fire Chief, uh, Brew Becker was on it. He's gone, so, uh, so research, so this is someone that really needs to have knowledge of EMS and paramedic or EMT, and, uh, Steve Cadner is part of the Fire Department. He's been in EMS for a long time, carried a paramedic, so he would understand a lot of this. So I talked with Chief Mark today and he brought me his name to-
Steve who?
Cadner. Very knowledgeable and everything of EMS, so, uh, that would be someone we would could appoint at our next meeting for him to serve on that board.
How's he, how long's he been with us?
Uh, sure. Yeah, he's been with us for... Yeah, I know I-
What's his position with the Fire Department?
He's a firefighter.
Firefighter.
Previously, he ran amulets, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, he did. He's got a history of running an amulet service too, what, in years back, and so he, he, this terminology, everything they do at these meetings will be common knowledge to him, so. It'd be good representative for us to, if there's anything going on, he could bring back to let us know, so. That's, any other questions on that item? Everybody's good?
Is there any others that have been mentioned? Or Mr. Cadner?
No. But usually our, we've always had one for ambulance care and there's always been, I used to serve on that board, and it's always been somebody in the emergency field for that board that had knowledge, so. All right. Item number two is, uh, Don, the Budget Amendment for the Employee Raises.
This will be the First Amendment that we were due to the budget, and the reason we want to do this was for the raises that were processed in at the beginning of the new year, the new budget year. They haven't been added in to the line item yet. So, we've had a lot of department heads calling saying, "My budget's low, why?" And salaries, well, we haven't put this Budget Amendment for salaries in, so that's, this is the First Amendment to put that into the system so they'll know where they're at in their budgets.
When were those raises actually given?
July.
Oh, they were, went back?
That, that's the, the six, the three to six percent.
I just wondered what month they got them, they got them in July, okay, all right, yeah. So the department heads and employees are, have all been finalized?
And when we voted the budget in?
That wasn't-
It wasn't part of it when we, when we voted in the six percent?
It was in, the, the funding for it was in the thirteen hundred under that contingency line, and this is spreading it from the contingency to the departments.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Don. Um, so, uh, number three's the Clay Road. Uh, you know, me and Terry's talked about this, bringing everybody. Clay Road is the road where there's been nearly, uh, I know four possi- four people nearly got killed during floods. And it's the only, I'm thinking about, it's the only road in the county that you still drive through a creek. And, uh, I had spoke with our attorney and there's really, it's just, we can make it a dead end at the creek both ways. Uh, and me and Terry's talked and, and I just think it's a big safety, we've nearly had four, well, had four people nearly lost their lives on it. Two citizens and, uh, public safety. And, uh, but all it would be is a gate across it, and you couldn't go through, and there'd be a, what, no through traffic sign and a dead end sign at the start of both roads, and if anybody wants to go, they would just have to turn around and go back out.
Now Terry, you gonna make a turnaround to where people can turn around?
So I went down there, I can, uh, it, it's tight, but they can back. Uh, I went down there and looked at it, and it's pretty tight on each side, I was thinking it was more room, uh, on each side.
Leave it tight, they won't be back.
Yeah, so, but this is a very safety issue, and I think there's more liability us leaving it where they can cross it than there is, and-
Where do they go when they cross the other side?
I just, it runs, no, no, it runs to, it runs, it runs to one, old one hundred and it runs up and intersect, Kelly? You got anything else to add on that, Terry? Yeah, so. I've-
Is there any other ways around here?
There. A couple of years ago, that, I'm sure you was talking about, there was a, uh, an automobile that got washed about four hundred yards down the creek, and they had to retrieve it through his property, and he was, you know, of course, he was upset about that, but, uh, every time we have a major occurrence with, with a lot of rainfall, uh, it's kind of tributary off of Walker Creek, if you can imagine, and it's in a flood plain.
Yep.
You can't constitute a pipe because it won't hold the volume. We can't afford to put a free spraining bridge over that, I don't think by any means with, with, you know, with no more service than it gives the general public, so.
Is this a lock gate, who'll have the locks, or will, do we have to formally close that, sir, or?
Or do we just put up barriers?
Yeah, this-
You know, flood of that nature, you know, we'd leave it accessible, uh, for the, for the residents or the homeowner, I mean, the landowners. But if, say for instance, normally under the flooding conditions, we always have to go there and barricade it off because of flood conditions. So it's just notoriously, every time the rain, you know, get large amounts of rain, that's the first place you go, because you gotta shut it down because it, you know, it's just so much water.
I think back in the spring, wasn't there with a bad flood, wasn't a firefighter was injured right there?
I was there that night.
Save a, save a woman, yeah.
So I've talked to Mason Bush that owns land, and I, so this road I was thinking, I was, on Clay Road, I was thinking just two owners on both sides, that's Kelly Road, where Mason and Dink Bell owns. Uh, but, so I'm gonna make another phone call to, and Mason said it's, it's his neighbor, he actually lives on Kelly, but his property touches that, so I'm gonna give a car, I'm gonna talk to that homeowner, and he also brought up one thing that ever who rents, the, it's a rental mobile home on the, uh, on one side of the creek, but their mailbox is on Kelly Road. So, I'm gonna talk to the post master myself too, uh, and just, it's no rhyme or reason being there or either on the other side, so, uh, I'm gonna make sure, so I'm gonna call to them others too, just for our meeting and just, it's really, there's something for us to put in a form, we got records that we made a dead ri- dead end because of, it is a high safety concern. And, uh, we've had, we actually had four people certainly lost their lives on it, so.
Chairman, what did Mason and, uh, Dink have to say when you talked to them?
Well, Mason's, uh, he's good with it, because he owns all that property, but Dink in the, he was on Kelly Road.
Okay.
And, um, so, but I was thinking it was them too, but it's on Clay Road, so I'm gonna talk to, uh, I think his name is Chris Cates.
I've got him.
Most of the people that I've talked to advocate, you know, for a dead end because of the safety concerns, you know, they're more aware of it than most general public.
And once it's-
Most of the ones I spoke with, they're advocate for it, you know, they, you know, they, they're, they're in support of it. They've been on me for a, a, a number of, well, good, good time, give them that, good amount of time.
Yeah.
So, just a big safety issue that will save, will, will save lives by doing this. Because, you know, people, they'll drive-
Who's gonna be, uh, who's gonna be in, I guess you'll be in charge of making sure the gates are closed in, in case of a big rain event, or something like that?
What the census is, is they, they don't care if they're closed all the time. Because this keep, and I know probably Natural Resources and everybody would be glad because they don't like cars in creeks anyway.
Well, if the, if the property owners are good with it-
They are, they're-
I mean, why, I think we should close it-
Yeah.
Permanently, and then they'll have a key to it if they need to use it, but-
That's kinda what we agreed upon, is they, you know, gives them accessibility to their properties and best of both worlds, so to speak.
Well, if we close it, aren't they from, aren't they responsible for their own, they can do their own gating, and there's no reason for us to have a key to it?
Well, it's a county road.
I think we would close it and we'd close it to everybody, I don't know that we could close it and give certain people a, a key to it and-
Well, I mean, if we closed it, but they still got rights to get to their property, they could do whatever, could they not?
If we abandoned the road, then, yeah, that's what we've done in the past in situations, and then the road will either go, could be, go back to the, to whoever deeded the road to the county originally, or if it was an assumed right of way, then it would go back to, uh, the landowners to the center line. So it'd go to the landowners on each side of the road to the center line, um, and then they would have to work it out if they had an easement or, or, or didn't have an easement. But it seemed to me that, in this case, it sounds like we're not talking about abandoning it, we're just talking about closing and making a dead end, which is a different process.
It's not as aggressive as abandoning it, and we never know what the day might be and we need it open.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
All right. All right, anything else? Okay, our next item is, uh, so you know, we got a generator down at the, uh, OJL that's been sitting there, it's been cranking up some, and, uh, but, uh, we could move it to this building here, so we'll never lose power here during any type of storms. And, uh, so that was, it's been checked out by maintenance. Also, uh, I'm waiting for hear from him, he was gonna get, I think, uh, Bentley, Mr. Bentley was gonna look at it to say, "Hey, yeah, it's a good thing to do." I mean, it's, it's in good shape, so, uh, it's gonna be looked at, but I just, it's, we got a place out here, it could be set up, uh, it could be wired into this building, and it just, it's a generator that's sitting there and unused, so. Uh, yes, or well, I mean, yeah, that's what they do, and they do generator service and so. Well, they do generator service on, uh, without, but just bring to the board, uh, just say, "Hey, make sure y'all good with that and move from point A to point B."
If the commissioners could speak into your microphones, please? Or they, they need to be a little closer to you there.
All right. Uh, item number five, update on, to the subdivision order, ordinance.
Apparently that office isn't here. Um, the commissioners had brought up, um, some, a couple of changes that they would like to see made to the new subdivision ordinance, and, and we knew we'd probably have to tweak it some when it came in. Um, I would recommend maybe having the board sit down with that office, because it came to my attention also that other than the one that had been mentioned by the commission board, there's several items in there that, that they think, um, needs to be fixed.
Can we schedule that for our work session then, next month, or is it something we need to address before then?
No, I mean, you can schedule it for your work session and we can make sure that, that, yes.
That's what I'd like to do, if we could, Chairman, just have that thirty minutes or an hour before our work session.
Yeah.
Yeah, even, I'd say even better to have it scheduled before.
Just right before, and then we can go right into this.
Play five o'clock.
Because they did mention, she didn't mention she's been going through it and going ahead and highlighting some things that she wants us to look at, this, uh, her, some of her recommendations of being changed, so.
Okay.
All right. Next. The, uh, requests for qualifications for My Turn Field project.
To you, David.
Uh, well, actually Avery has the document that he's fixing to tell us a little bit about.
I can tell you about the document, and if you got questions about the project, you can ask David about that.
Thank you.
Uh, but the document, essentially, we're looking for, uh, services for somebody to help, uh, construct the My Turn Field, and the way that's being proposed is a little bit different than this board's done before. Uh, I think most of the time we've done low bid process, which is a process you can, you can do, but you can also do, uh, request for qual- qualifications and choose somebody based on their qualifications in addition to their fees involved. And that's kind of the process that's being proposed for this, where there's a process by which, uh, we're select a design builder for the project. Uh, the, you can kind of construct the process however you want, so if you have questions or concerns, or you wanna see it a little different way, let me know, let's talk about it and see how you would like to see it constructed, but kind of how this, uh, process is laid out is that there would be a, uh, committee in place, uh, selected to evaluate potential candidates. There's a list of qualifications that the candidates have to meet, uh, they meet those qualifications, they submit the required documentation for the committee to review, and then the committee ranks those, uh, based on the criteria that's, uh, in the proposal. And then the committee will select some finalists, uh, those finalists will then submit the actual designs, proposals, uh, and, uh, and their fees, and then the committee will rank those, uh, based on, again, the criteria laid out in the proposal. And they'll be selected in order and, uh, presented to you for your selection. Uh, you can also interview the finalists if you choose to interview them, and, uh, and then select based on the recommendation and the ranking from the committee plus the interview that you conduct. So that's kind of a broad outline of the process.
So are we starting the qualification period, is that what?
Yes, that's what we would be, uh, uh, how, how does that venue, through the, uh, dot gov website, uh, how's that advertised?
You have to, uh, post it on the state, uh, website.
At the curmats, okay.
Uh, you can also circulate it however you want, you can put an ad in the papers, you can circulate it if you have people that you know might be interested and so.
Okay.
But there are certain advertising that we have to do, so we'll advertise it, uh, the required advertisement, and then we have to post it on the state website.
And for advertising and to get a, uh, proposal back from contractors, is that a thirty, sixty day? What kind of timeline it was, does that require minimums?
We can make it different timelines, I think we have a thirty, I think it was about thirty days, I'll have to look and see what we put in. Uh, we left some of the dates blank, you can change some of the dates, and so it's just be, once a committee selected on scheduling with them and getting the timing of, of all that, but basically if the board approves of this, uh, form, uh, request for design services, then we would start the processes laid out there. So if the board votes to approve it, then we start the process and go through the process. So again, if there's any tweaks that you think need to be made in that process before you vote on it, let me know and we can talk about it.
Okay.
Is these fields, uh, if I'm not mistaken, when they were originally talked about building these fields, uh, they were gonna build three other fields with this field?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, uh, now, is, is the same criteria, is all this gonna be?
They, they'd be in the whole four field complex.
Okay, I got you. I had a, reason, reason I'm asking, I got a gentleman that's, uh, he donated all the plumbing for the whole-
And he can, and, and that's something that ever who is awarded to won't have to, he can give any kind of work or he may be paid completely and he can turn around and write a check back to My Turn. Uh, there's several ways that, uh, in, uh, work will be attributed to that project.
Okay, well, I'll need to know a lot more about that, of course.
Yes, and we will. He would actually go through the general, ever who the contract's awarded to, because they will be in charge of all, all, uh, phases of that.
Talking about the GC?
Yeah, we, we as a board will not be involved with it.
I got you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, any more questions? Uh, next, uh, another item, uh, Chief Mark had called about, uh, it's time to get some air bottles. Uh, and I'll let him bring up, uh, he can tell you about it, but my part, I know about it, you know, we, Cobb County had gave us air packs and stuff way back, about five or six years ago, maybe seven, uh, we had purchased two trucks and and they throwed in air packs during that time. Uh, and so anyway, them air packs have a lot, the bottles have a lifespan on them, of fifteen years. And so the bottles are coming up to their, into their lifespan, so it's time. And, uh, I also gave you a copy of the Splotch, uh, and you can see the fire budget, uh, under the Splotch item, the, this, uh, that you got a copy of also. And that's where these items is, a Splotch project, talked with Don about it, so. He said it could come out of the Splotch like it's set aside for, so. Chief?
So like Chairman said, they're, uh, fifteen year bottles, they'll be out at the end of March. We want to use these current bottles from March, uh, the last day of March. Um, if you look on the paper there, the hundred and twenty, those are snap chain cylinders, that's for the air packs we wear on our back to fight fire, plus spare bottles as well, we have to have. And on the bottom ones there, there's six, those are for our rip packs, the rip packs are used, fireman goes down, you carry that pack in and you're able to give them more air till you can get them out, that's the, kind of the difference, is the hookups, the, um, valves are different. And there will be, uh, obviously we're tax exempt, but the shipping cost, from the way I understand, will be figured at the time of purchase, so that number will go up a little bit with shipping.
I remember when we did those bottles from Cobb, I believe it was, but haven't we had a, have we purchased any bottles since then?
I don't believe so.
Ain't we have? Uh, and we got roughly a hundred and twenty in service now bottles, and we, we gonna replace them all?
Yes, sir, we have to.
Okay.
They're all gonna go out of date.
And, hold back folks, our bid package says we gotta have three, is that correct?
So I have some information they gave me, it, um, shows we have active account with them, it's called Sourcewell, it's a procurement, bid procurement thing. Um, I think with this, they're like a reason, you could, you could, they're our reason person we have to buy from, the way I understand.
This-
That's why there's only one quote.
Right, the Sourcewell, when, when, uh, when something goes through Sourcewell, they've already quote, they've already bid it to the state, and anybody in the state that's buying this gets the, gets the state pricing on that, which suffices for our getting the competitive bids.
So they, they, they got their pricing, they price it the same throughout the state then?
The way I understand, yes, sir.
Okay.
How many of these you have at each, at each station or whatever?
Um, so, yet, NFPA and ISO requires four packs on every first out apparatus, and then you have to have your spare packs. So you got four packs on every apparatus and then four spares, so it's eight total for each apparatus, then you got the rescue truck that you have to have bottles for, and then the, uh, the six of them, the, the ones that's kind of odd, the six by themselves, those are a different valve, and those are for your rip packs. You have to have one on each rip pack, plus you have to have a spare for it. That's kind of how you come up with the numbers.
Who, um, who keeps up with the, the dates?
So-
Why are they so close to?
So I became chief, uh, my first day was, uh, obviously December eighteenth, and shortly thereafter, we have a lieutenant that's in charge of the air pack servicing and maintenance. Shortly thereafter, he called me and said, "Hey, uh, you need to look at these bottles," and he said, "Hey, these are carbon bottles, they got a fifteen year life," he said, "and they're out at the end of March." So I, I wasn't made aware until right after I made chief. I'm not sure why somebody wouldn't wear it prior to that, I, I couldn't tell you.
Right.
You said these are carbon fiber bottles?
Carbon bottles, yes, sir.
Lighter, where they can tote them?
Yeah.
I'm glad we kept that extra Splotch.
Good Lord blesses.
Yeah.
Is this what is in the Splotch account, is this, uh, what Splotch Seven has generated for it thus far, is that the pluses and minuses, and that's what he's got, what he's got currently?
It, it is what they currently have in each of those accounts, it's not necessarily, it's what, what they've gotten minus what they've used.
Okay.
Remember that, when we done budgets, that's, that's what we ended up wanting to keep for emergencies.
Right, here it is.
Here it is.
There it is, uh, okay.
All right, any other questions on that? All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And, Chief, we'll, we'll vote on, we'll have to, it's a voting item, so we'll vote on it the first meeting of February, and then from that date, you can get the, be able to proceed.
How long's it gonna take to get them in? Because that might be-
That was a question I had him earlier, he said he should be able to have them here before the deadline of the end of March.
If we, if we do it at, if we do it at the beginning of February, are we gonna have enough time?
That, that should give us two months, and that's what I asked him, I said, "If I get these ordered in the next few weeks, can you have them here by the end of March?" He said, "Yeah, it shouldn't be a problem."
I was gonna say, if we don't, if we can't, I mean, you gotta have them, so.
Right.
You know where this company's from?
Um, I'm not really sure where they're based out of, to be honest with you, I could probably-
It's one of those, it's one of those state.
Yeah.
I don't have their-
It's the brand name of what they need, but we, we would never know, uh, by doing this-
That's a state deal, yeah.
Procurement while we got it, so. All right.
Thank you, all right.
And this is, for, this is, this, this is hard numbers right now for the Splotch, so y'all can keep that, and every time it updates, I'll make sure y'all get a copy.
Thank you.
All right, hey, the next last item here is, I give you the, uh, uh, it's a fund analysis for the new courthouse or administrative building. It's just, uh, we just kind of laid out these numbers, this, so all, all, allow us to know where we're at.
I appreciate that.
And, um, so, um, you can kind of see how it lays, what it's looking like, because we, we did a projected number of twenty-five million, because it's gotta be furnished, so we had it, we did the twenty-five million projected number for the building, and, uh, but this is kind of gives us a, our goals, the land's already ours, so it's purchased, and as you move through it, you see what the current Splotch right now, and what I give you, it's got, uh, that's been set aside already, and then the other estimated Splotch funds, and then how everything's been laid out, uh, y'all had already established. So, uh, but that's just something to go by and give us our goals and see where we're at, and you don't, can't see something, you just don't know where you're at when you're trying to meet projects, so.
Can, uh, have we looked into, uh, um, maybe getting an engineer to, for some drawings or, or, or anything?
So-
There, there is a current drawing, and, um, Commissioner Tarpley, do you have that picture of that? That, um, it, I mean, there's some tweaking that will need to be done, but it's not gonna reach, it's initial.
And, and something that's been asked of me, I, I, obviously I frequent our courthouse quite a bit, um, from some of the judges and other court personnel, is, is to maybe have a, some type of a planning committee of some local attorneys, judges and stuff, that would have some input that I think would be valuable when we, when we go to build this from, you know, I guess.
I'd, I'd like to be getting that.
Yeah, I'd like to, if we can start putting that together.
And you, and maybe one day when you're in the office, uh, I can bring you the drawings of what's been done as far as
Yeah.
that part, but it, it needs to be very realistic.
Yeah.
And, and not over grander.
Yeah.
But we need plenty of space to grow into, and I'd really like for- But we need plenty of space to grow into and I'd really like for the judges to be thinking about, uh, even, you know, sizes, uh. Is any special equipment they gonna have to have in it that's gonna take up what a normal size office would be? Or if it's just gonna be bookshelves, you know, let's give some reality to it, but, but I'm, I'm ready to let y'all, y'all need to be looking at it.
I, I think we need to, ever, ever, administration building needs to be doubled. I mean, whatever the square footage is, you need to double it forever.
Well, I don't know of any that's got overabundance of room.
No, that's why I'm saying you can only, I mean, that's the only way to know that you got something for the future.
So the setup preliminary plans is already, maybe we get a copy for each entity, so have a section in it and let them kind of look at their section and kind of. If they need to rearrange or do anything, then once that's done, we can put it to a.
Put it all together.
Draws all that up.
Yeah.
And, and get that going, but I think the very first, I mean, just looking, you know, you got the property setting there. So the very first thing is you gotta have plant grading plants. And, and that's the very first thing you gotta have, get the place flat. And, um, I would assume we'd want it as flat as possible, use as much of the property as we can. And that would be from, someone would have to draw up the grading plans that, which when you start doing trees, I think there's some money there for timber and, uh, to be gotten, uh, back. And so that's, that's the very first step that you would do. Uh, so, um, so if, we gotta get some, uh, grading plans done, that's the very first thing. And that would be separated from the actual building layout.
I'd be actually the one because that engineered plan, that engineered plan has to be on a, on a specific plot of ground.
Yeah.
So I will, I'll make sure we, I'd step out and I'll get our, everybody, all the entities, it's don't be in that complex. And, and if we can get a copy of what you got and get it to them to say, hey.
They need to be thinking about it, it's time.
And then, once we get that kind of done, then we can send and get the, uh, plans for grading and everything. I mean, I know you mentioned, David, it, uh, sometimes it's easier to push the trees down than let the timber company cut them and, and. So, but we can't, I mean, that's the thing, it, I don't think you gotta have plans to push trees down, get the timber going. Uh, I'm, I don't think you have to, if you're cutting the timber, we could have somebody to go level the timber without any plan. So that would be the very first thing, if we wanted to get a bid or price who, uh, wanted to push the trees down, anyhow, to make it easier. And, uh, let them get, give us a price on the timber, that would be the very first thing to do. And we could, we got plenty of woodcut, wood companies in the county to, but we could specify, we want the trees pushed over and.
Well, that goes back to the general contractor as well.
And either how we wanna do it, if we're looking at getting a good timeline in place and moving, I say we set a twenty-four month and having this complete. You set a goal, you set a goal and then start working toward it. So we need to start, this cold weather gets out of here and, uh, rain, start, hey, if we can have that in place for somebody to go in there and start laying the timber down. Uh, anyhow, we wanna do it.
Most of the time your graders come in and do it, but we need to, we need to make a decision whether we gonna let a timber company come in there and timber it first.
Yep.
Before we let a grader, cause a grader's gonna come in there, just like across the road at Infra Metals. And they're gonna lay it down and get the timber out and, and go to laying out their, their building. Cause you gotta see what you're looking at before you can, you know, lay it out, so.
Get that going.
We'll have to make that decision.
And rather we wanna do it, just be thinking about that and to make some, uh, to move forward with it. Cause if we set a twenty-four month of completion date, we gotta get moving and, uh, every little bit helps. All right.
I will, well, thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, um, okay, that, anybody got anything else?